Welcome to the September. I'm gonna wait till you guys. Welcome to the September 11th, 2023, meeting of the Hampton School Board. May we all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there any public comment at this time? There being none, I would ask at this time the administrators to introduce the new staff that is here.
Hold on. Mr. Riley, did you? Does somebody have one? I don't wanna. I think we do have one.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Hi, my name's Tim Riley. I just wanted. Okay, sorry about that. I just wanted to make an issue with something I dealt with a couple of weeks ago. I had a kid come up to me on North Beach, and he made like a political comment, asking me if like, do Black Lives Matter? I'm concerned about like, the kind of stuff that kids are being taught in school. Like, in terms of like, political, what they're asked to be told in public.
Oh, that sounds like some of the groups that are out there. Dr. Costa, would you like to comment on that?
I didn't quite hear it. I apologize.
He want, he wanted to say that he was approached by some people on the beach.
Um, you know, it was one child.
One child about what they're being taught in school, right?
Exactly.
Okay.
Not knowing the context, and not knowing the specific question, and not knowing the age, it's hard for me to.
About 10 years old.
I'm s-
It was around 10 years old, I'd say.
And he was asking you?
Yes, yes, he came up and verbally asked me, "Do Black Lives Matter?"
Again, I can't. First off, is it a Hampton kid? Is it a?
It was a, it was a white kid about.
My, my recommendation to you is if you have a problem with what is being taught in a specific school, which we have three. We have Center, we have Marston, and we have the Academy.
Correct.
All three have great administrators who are willing to answer any questions you have on their curriculum and their status. They would be the first step that you go to. So if you know, if the child is 10, maybe it was at the Academy, so maybe you'd like to talk to Mr. Hawkins and ask him your question.
Okay.
If you don't get satisfaction after you've been to the administration, then you can go to the superintendent.
Okay.
If you don't get satisfaction from the superintendent, then you go to the school board. So it helps if you do not cut the steps out. So please, go to the Academy and ask your question, and hopefully, you can get some answers.
Okay.
Just one, one further clarification. If he's, if the child is 10 years old, I'm gonna guess it's a Marston student.
Okay.
So that's a fifth grader, but again, I guess it's, it's hard to comment, like, is it a Hampton student? I mean, there are many children that are on the beach. I guess again, we need to know context. We know, need to know specifically, you know, what is the question? If your, if your question to all of us is
Right.
about curriculum, we're happy to answer those questions. But if a child is asking you a question, you know, again, it might be worth a conversation, you know, with the child's parents. I guess without knowing more information, it, for me, it's hard to, it's hard to comment.
I would, my answer to, "Does Black Lives Matter?" All lives matter in Hampton.
I mean, that's, that's my.
All children matter.
That's what I said to him.
Then you gave the exact right answer.
Right.
Because we care about all our children.
Yes, exactly. That's what I said to the child, too. Alright, thanks.
Now, we can introduce the new staff. I would ask Mr. Lannan to come forth first, as he is at Center School.
Good evening, everyone. Center School, we have two new faces, full-time staff for the school year. The school year, we're very excited. They're off to an excellent start. I'd like to introduce Mallory Richard.
Hi.
Mallory's taking over for Amy for a full year, leave of absence, and Mallory is working full-time at Center School, and she's off and running. Are you having a good year so far?
I'm having a great year, yes.
Look at that, having a great year. We also have Jocelyn Snyder. Say hi to Jocelyn. Jocelyn is joining us in grade one. We had a retirement, no, we had a resignation over the summertime, and she joined us in grade one. Both these faces were part of the district as substitutes last year, so we're very lucky that we brought them on on a full-time basis. So we're off to running, and they're off to a great start, so thank you both. Do you have any questions for the new staff, or anything to say?
Welcome and enjoy your jobs.
I told you it was easy. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Mr. Sadler, the principal at Marston School.
Hello. Alright, so two of my three staff are here. The third's actually at an Orton-Gillingham training, so exciting stuff if you're in the special ed world. We have Ms. Sarah Gay here, who is a case manager at Marston School, joins our special ed team, and Nicole Hodgson, who joins our fourth-grade team. So both come with some experience and highly recommended, and a great fit so far at the Marston School. So we're really excited to have them join us, and looking forward to a great year.
Welcome, and have fun, and enjoy your job.
Thank you, we're excited to be here.
Thank you.
Mr. Hawkins, principal of the Academy.
Good evening. We have five new staff members. The Ms. Katz, Ms. Lauren Katz is our ESOL teacher, and unfortunately, she couldn't be here with us tonight because she was going to Concord to take a class in ESOL. So she's still working on some classes, but regretfully, she couldn't come. She's hit the ground running and doing a great job, so. Jen Langivan is our new psychologist. Ms. Brenna Mooney is our new math, seventh-grade math teacher this year. And Mr. Sullivan is, Sean Sullivan is our new health teacher. And Tim Westfall is back there, but you met him before.
Oh, that's right.
Our new assistant principal, that's right.
Welcome to all of you. Enjoy your jobs and have fun. Are the ducks still alive there?
They're doing wonderful.
Oh, good.
Thank you.
Does anyone have anything for the board report on any committee? Us? No? Frank? Budget committee's meeting next Tuesday night, and part of our program will be Mariah and Dr. Costa presenting the school overview of last year. Mr. Lannan, can we, do you have a report?
As stated earlier, we're all off to a great start, and we're excited to have lots of things to look forward to in the school year. At the beginning of the school year, we did our normal stuff, meet the teacher, and get to know everybody, and that went well. And we got, this month, we also have our parent-teacher orientation that's coming up in the October 20, uh, September 26th. So excited to bring the parents in. That night's a little different. That's a parents-only event where the parents come in and learn about the curriculum, and they learn about what a typical day looks like. It's not a parent conference that's coming up in November, but it's a great opportunity to see the class that's fully decorated. When they come in and meet the teacher, it's just, we're still setting up and saying, "Hello, these are the papers you need to fill out." It's a distinct difference between open house and meet-the-teacher night. So we're excited to continue to offer opportunities to get parents in the building to be part of our school community. So we're excited about that. We had our annual Boohoo Breakfast. Some parents call it a Woo-Hoo, because they're excited to get their kids off to school, but we had a huge turnout this year, bigger than we've had in quite a while. They came in and, after they dropped off the kindergarten kids the first day of school, they had an opportunity to hear from the PTA as well, from the administration, about expectations that go on the first week of school, what a child is doing, and just to give relief some, some of their anxieties. We had some, some treats for them, and T-shirts for the kids. So it was a great opportunity. For your reading pleasure, I just gave you a tentative list of some field trips that we're tentatively planning on going. Not too far away, at Center School, we don't take large trips far away. Music Hall, so forth, Seacoast, Newcastle, some trips like that. And we take advantage of Hampton, walking field trips a lot, Tuck and library and so forth. And lots to offer here in Hampton as well, and just outside of Hampton. Do you guys have any questions from me?
Any questions for Mr. Lannan?
Thank you so much, have a great night.
Mr. Sadler from Marston.
So again, so off to a great start, I feel like, at Marston School. You know, really focusing in the beginning of the year on the first six weeks of school, some of the responsive classroom approaches that we really build into the school-community fabric at Marston. So that's gonna be a major push for us through most of the month of September, as we're also collecting baseline data on students, and, you know, starting to plan for interventions and groupings that'll take place throughout the course of the year. A couple of just updates for families. Tomorrow is School Pitcher Day, so information is on Facebook. It was emailed out about how to order pitchers. You can order pitchers after the fact, so don't fret. That'll happen tomorrow. And just a friendly reminder, if you're not receiving our Friday emails, just contact the main office. You might have unsubscribed or blocked them inadvertently at one point. Those come out every Friday at 5:00, and then a Sunday night phone call comes out at 7:00 PM every Sunday with updates and information for the week. So if families aren't receiving either of those, please let us know. And otherwise, just, you know, looking forward to September, getting the ball rolling on a great year.
Any questions for Mr. Sadler? Thank you to the Marston School staff and parents, and all the parents in SAU 90 for their patience with the construction, and with the patience with the bus drivers who can't help delays. So thank you all for your patience and understanding.
Absolutely, thank you.
Mr. Hawkins.
I just have to readjust. Yep, so we have my, my board report. One, a couple of things that I'd like to really talk about. One is our professional development that, thanks to Dr. DeSilva Napton, we got together for the, the middle school this year, is the science of learning. So we started off the year with a full-staff science-of-learning training, and we'll be doing that throughout the year. It's really identifying what makes proficient reading and, and writing for students, and informs all staff members, whether it be math teachers, science teachers, social studies teachers, anyone in the classroom, about reading and best practices around it, how to really develop it, and why some kids have difficulties. And so we're gonna be continuing with that training, and very positive feedback from my staff on, on that. Our sports teams are off to a great start. One thing I forgot to tell you about Mr. Sullivan was not only is he our new health teacher, but he refereed the volleyball game today for us. And Ms. Mooney has agreed to be the assistant coach for volleyball. We had over 50 students go out for the team, so because Ms. Mooney took the assistant coach job, we didn't have to make any cuts. So she's working with a group of students three days a week. And, you know, when the other team is traveling, she'll be in the gym with them. We had over 160 students sign up for one of our sports, so either boy's soccer, girl's soccer, field hockey, volleyball, and of course, cross-country. So you can tell when the, the bell goes off on days when there are practices and games, because the buses load up in about 30 seconds, because there's a lot of kids who are staying after with us, and it's, it's really, really wonderful. We're gonna be getting our AAA going after school for academic assistance, our Power Hour, kids can stay after and work on homework. And our art club, our tech club, and some of the new teachers came to me with some different club ideas also. We're also doing a cooking club, which is usually very well-attended also. Our picture day is on Friday, and we have a bunch of other dates there. And I know for field trips, I gave you a packet. If you'd like me to come back up later on, I can do that, or I can cover those now. It's up to you. Okay, alright. So the packet that I gave you has a, the DC trip is the first one. Included in there is gonna be the Quebec trip, the Puerto Rico trip, and the environmental camp. To start off with the Washington DC trip, we have slated for May 14th through the 17th, and our parent night for the DC trip is gonna be on September 19th. The, we're going with a new travel group this year. We've met with them and are really happy with the itinerary that they've set for us. The total price for the trip itself is $1,040, and that is without insurance. We're going with another separate insurance company that would be $95, so a total of $1,135 altogether, which is approximately $370 less than last year. The included in the packet, you can see the itinerary if you'd like to take a look at it, and the Quebec trip, we have, the Quebec parent night and Puerto Rico parent night are on the 26th of September. And the Quebec trip altogether is $850. Included in that, the insurance is not included in that price, which is another $23 for cancel for any reason. The Puerto Rico trip, I'm sorry, the itinerary is also included with the, the Quebec trip. The Puerto Rico trip is $2850, so $2,850 with $63 for cancel for any reason. And those, sorry, I don't have the exact dates for you on there. The first two weeks in April are when the two trips are going out. So one trip will get back, and then the following Friday, the next trip will go out. The itinerary is also included with that. The last page is a letter that we've recently sent out to all sixth-grade parents for environmental camp. And the cost before any fundraising going on is $175, which is about $50 less than it was last year. I've given you a lot of information, but I'm here if you have any questions.
Questions?
I, I have some questions, but I would prefer to, to talk about them in non-public and ask Ken if he can join us in non-public. And I'd prefer not to do it now, to keep all these people waiting.
Okay, sounds like a plan.
Great.
Hang around.
I will, I will. Thank you very much.
And perhaps have Amy Murphy join us.
Great.
Thank you. And, I'm sorry. And as we finish with all three principals' reports, I want, I wanna ask if it would be possible, and if the board wants it, the board may not want it, to include in each principal's report just, just a brief bullying incidents reported, bullying incidents substantiated. That's it.
That used to be in the report.
It did, but we haven't seen it for a long time. Does, does the board want that?
Are you making a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Do we have a second? I'll make that second.
Okay.
All those in favor, all those opposed, all those abstaining? Okay. Then please include that in your reports that you send, give to us each month.
And just while we're on procedural things.
Yep.
I'm wondering, and I know we used to, Ginny, a long time ago.
Yep.
When we had votes, it, it would have, for any motion, it would have yes, and it would have Bridle, DeLuca, Shepherd, and it would have no, so-and-so, abstained, so-and-so. Could we ask the, Colleen to do that?
We don't always do it for every, excuse me, we don't always do it for every vote. But if that's what you would like, yes, she could do that.
I'm just one person.
Right, I realize that, Mr. Shepherd.
Okay.
If she could, and would you ask Colleen to please write down the yeses and the nos?
If it's, if it's cumbersome for her?
I don't think, you know, we don't have too many votes.
Yeah, I can.
Yep. Plus?
No.
Anything, Frank? Alright, Dr. DeSilva Napkin. A very busy person these, these days, I hear.
Yep, times are rolling right along and staying very busy. But you do have my report. I just wanted to start with some statistics, and so you, I'm sure you've read it, but numbers are up all around, all over the nation, and our special ed numbers are in the same boat with, you'll see, we're starting off with 18.6% of our kids needing specialized instruction in our district. So all the numbers are here, and we're doing a great job. Anything else?
Any other questions? Mr. Shepherd?
No, I'm good.
Okay, I guess you're all set.
Okay, thank you so much, have a great night.
You too. Amber Levine.
Hello. As you can imagine, it's been very busy for our department, getting Chromebooks set up, accounts set up for new staff members, children in the district. We've had some updates and some changes over the summer. We have a new incident IQ, which chat, tracks all of our incidences with computers and devices throughout the district. That just helps us identify technology issues across the board, see if there are common themes or professional development opportunities that we need to do for staff. We also created a Google Slide document that was shared with everybody, highlighting changes and giving teachers resources for those changes. We purchased new Chromebooks for Marston, and we are recycling those that are out of warranty and no longer able to use. Channel 13 is now Channel 8. That was something that Comcast did. And so you can find us on Channel 8 now. We're still broadcasting live on YouTube as well, so you can find us there. We are looking at all three schools to kind of develop some multimedia projects for this year to highlight what's going on in all three schools, so we can put that on Channel 8. And we've also finally finalized the upgrade of the sound system to the Marston Genesium. So Gus Carlson and Marston will be able to do productions over, on the stage, over there. So we're pretty excited about that. Just one thing that I wanna remind, there was a user agreement that went out to all families this year that they signed off. We're trying to be fiscally responsible, so student Chromebooks. We're asking students to be careful and respectful and responsible with them. We understand accidents happen, but we're trying to, you know, carry the financial burden of all these Chromebooks. So we're going to be sending out letters. If we have students that are breaking Chromebooks, and it's happening more than once, we're gonna be sending letters home asking for them to, to repair what they have damaged. Most of it's screen damage or a lost charger. We had about 30 chargers not returned at the end of last year. That's a huge financial cost for our district. We are working with Emily Fixler, so if there are issues with families that can't, you know, pay for things, we're working with Emily Fixler and that to try to find funding for that. But we're just asking families to keep them. There's covers that they can purchase. The sixth-grade teachers do talk about that with all students. But more information to come for parents on that later on.
Any questions for Amber?
Perfect.
Thank you so much for your work, Amber, that you're doing with Pat Baker.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
She told me about the stuff you were doing with the preschool and with the families. Sounds perfect.
Yeah, so that, more information on that will come. We're working on creating an early childhood, early literacy website, part of Center School's website, to just get some resources out for those families who aren't quite in school yet, for preschool-aged children and younger. So we're working on that, and that will be coming out later on this year.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Ms. Salasad.
Good evening, everyone. Hope everybody's doing well. We've gotten off to a fairly good start here at the Hm School District, and I guess it's the time to thank my staff for the wonderful jobs they continue to do. I don't know that I need to announce that I'm still looking for full-time staff. I'm reaching out to the high school and SST and Exeter for maybe some high school students that would like to work from four to eight, five to nine, pick up four hours. We pay a reasonable wage of $15 an hour. And I think it could be a good time for people to participate and earn some extra cash, and maybe pay car insurance, or save for college, or whatever kids do nowadays with their money. Other than that, maybe we just continue to move forward. Thank you all very much, I appreciate it.
Any questions for Keith?
I, I have just one question.
Oh, sure.
Are you looking for a full-time custodian?
Two full-time custodians.
You're looking for two?
Two, correct, currently.
Are they day positions?
Second shift.
Second shift, what time is second shift?
Two to 10.
Two to 10, thank you.
Yep, thank you very much.
Thank you, Keith, for all you do. Mary, our food service director. Mary also has a form that she sent out that she would really like parents to fill out.
Okay, I was just gonna say, we're pleased you got your free and reduced meals forms. They all were sent out the first day of school to every student. Please fill them out. The income guidelines have changed since last year, so last year is different than this year. Please fill them out, and you don't, we see what happens. And if you need help, please email me always, if you need any financial help. And we are off to a great year. Ready to go, kids are great to come, staff is happy to be back.
And you are looking for staff, or do you?
I am looking for staff. I'm looking for part-time staff, three, three, four hours a day. Again, reasonable wage and part-time school hours.
Excuse me, Mary, what's like approximate times, three, four hours?
10 AM to 1:00, or 9:00 to 1:00. So, come on down.
All board members got a copy of the EFAA, which is a policy we're gonna look at. It's meal charging priorities, and it's required by law. Did you, did I get a chance to look at it? And if you did, do you have any questions for Mary on this?
I don't.
Okay. Frank? Okay.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
Thank you.
Your turn, Dr. Costa.
So, last month, our meeting was fairly early. It was August 8th, as soon as it could be. But I wanted to provide you with some of the documents that we used for our leadership retreat, as well as new staff orientation and our Welcome Back newsletter, just to give you a sense of the kinds of things that we talked about during our orientation, what we talked about during our retreat, and so that you were just aware of some of the, some of the things that have been on our mind and what we've been working towards. As you can see, that Polly Bath was our keynote and was well-received by the staff and the paraeducators. She provided a really nice overview about some of the behaviors that are impacting our students' learning. And I think that we would all agree that not only was she informative, but she was also, she actually had a sense of humor, which was, it really helps to bring some levity to a serious situation as we think about these behaviors. And then afterwards, she had the opportunity to spend some time with the mental health team, and then she had lunch with our paraeducators. So, I think it was a really nice use of her time in our day for that Monday before school started when we did our Meet the Teacher in open houses. You can see that, just that we continue to work with our stakeholders as the year unfolds. We did have our police and fire and rescue come to our retreat. We have a planning session scheduled for September 27th, wherein Chief Reno, along with Chief McMahon, will be coming to talk specifically about reunification. We are also working with schools in the seacoast area, so that, God forbid, if there were any kind of emergency on the seacoast, we would have a pool of people who have been trained that we could draw upon to help us with reunification. A lot of times, when what they have found is schools that are involved with some of these crises, we are in the, we are not in a position to really help ourselves. And it's great when you have people who are trained that can come in and to help and oversee. So, we're working with our friends at SAU 16 and people in the southeast to have that regional reunification plan and training. So, just another way to be proactive as we think about safety in our students. On, as I'm looking down, we do have suicide prevention coming up. That is a required training that will take place on Wednesday, September 20th, along with a DCYF overview. These are required by policy for us to have those annual reviews and trainings. We will have an evening with our parents on Thursday, September 28th. We are joining forces with SAU 21. Those parents will also be invited. So, it's nice when we can do that as well. And then, just looking at some of the curriculum practice that we're working on, we continue to work with demonstrated success as we are continuing to align our methods and materials and language arts, but also a more concentrated focus on math this year, K-8. Last year, we know that Hampton Academy got a jumpstart on that math, but we're rolling that into our elementary school this year as well. And you notice that there are a number of trainings that Primex is offering our staff, so that we can ensure that we're getting in some of the other trainings that are required on an annual basis. And last but not least, we are working with the principals around developing goals for our district and also for our school goals. I know, Frank, you came on September 5th. I think we were a little bit disappointed with the turnout, but I know that the principal's going to take that on on September 20th. We pushed our second meeting back to the following week, on the 26th, so that we can have a more in-depth conversation just as we try to establish goals for the school year. And if there's something specific that you would like us to focus on, please make sure that we are aware of that, so we can add it to our focal areas. And I think with that said, I think that, you know, overall, we are very lucky in Hampton, is that, as I speak with my colleagues around the state, and that many are still trying to fill positions, including Exeter and Rochester and Dover, Somersworth. We're lucky that we have able to attract, retain professional staff, although we do have some support staff that we are still trying to seek out, as Facilities Manager Keith Lassad said, and our Food Service Director, Mrs. Borg, Mary Borg, mentioned to us. I think that we've done a really good job overall, filling those positions, and that thanks in large part to the work of our Hampton leadership team. But it's also, I think it speaks to the district in that I think people do want to come to Hampton, so it's not something we take lightly and something we're always mindful of. So, we're grateful for that. Any questions for me?
Any questions for Dr. Costa? Okay. Mr. Lassad, Mr. Shepard have a question?
Just a quick question. And there's no hurry on this. How are we doing with the teacher bench? I'm going to call it the Teacher Bench Project. Is it still slowly going forward? You might want to use the mic.
Further information from the committee that was recommending the bench.
All right. But we're still moving forward slowly.
Yeah, I can't see why we can't have it.
Okay.
And we'll move forward. I just need more information.
Thank you.
Thank you. Glad you brought that up.
Sorry. Meant to do that earlier.
That's all right. Is, we did this new staff introductions, the steering committee work you've already reported on, field trips we've reported on. So, we're down to enrollment?
The deadline for really looking more closely at enrollment is 9:45. We anticipate that number could potentially change, as I know that Marston had an influx of students that they registered. I know that we are still in the process of updating those numbers, so we are watching those numbers, particularly as we think about budget, which will be coming in a very short period of time. So, that's something that we continue to watch. I think the Nezdecs, which reports out what the numbers are, has not always been accurate in that we have been staying fairly consistent as you look even year to year. We're pretty close to where we were last year. So, we're watching those closely to see, is it, are we going to have a downward trend, or is it going to stay at this 9:45, 9:50, 9:60? That's the number we tend to be hovering around. So, we'll be curious to watch that.
Any questions for Dr. Costa on enrollment? All right. Now, the fiscally conservative person, Mariah, your report.
So, we have most of the blanket purchase orders in, not all of them. We still have a few contracts and stuff that we're waiting on to get those purchase orders in. But most of them are in, and we're starting to work on that. I have 11 grants that will be closing at the end of this month. And the new grants for '23-'24 have been written, and will be up and running for all processing and purchases. So, that's complete. And like you mentioned, we will be at the Budget Committee on Tuesday just to report again on where we ended in the school fiscal year '22-'23, and give some numbers and information on, and wonderful things that we completed last year. So, we'll do that next Tuesday at 6:00. And then, the only other thing that I would, we haven't touched on revenues, because we haven't really got any revenues in. You'll get a report on that next, next month. And Food Service has not approved of our statement yet, so we probably won't see food service revenues until October. So, those are the two things on that. But the only other thing is, I would like to try to pick a couple dates or get an idea of when you want to start the budget, so I know when I need to have it done, so that I can start planning.
How far along are you on your work?
So, we have a meeting October 10th, and I would need at least a good five-ish days to put those numbers in and print up and make the books. So, if we could do something after, after the week of the 16th in October, maybe, is my thought.
Personally, I'm free pretty much any day. I don't, I think I can speak for Andrew.
Well, how about you, Frank?
Oh, good. So, we could probably then maybe start October, the week of the 23rd? So that, that, we were, last year, we did Wednesdays, so that'd be the 25th.
What, when did we start last year?
The 12th.
The 12th.
Because remember, we have to have it done and to the Budget Committee the day, Monday, before Thanksgiving.
Correct.
So, that gives us a month, if we start on October 25th.
And then, I just need time to fix it and reprint all of them again for the Budget Committee. So, I need another at least four or five days.
Maybe one or two weeks. We may have to meet two nights.
Yeah.
Yeah.
If you want to throw out some dates, and we'll just use those as placeholders, and then we'll confirm at the next meeting.
We could do, like, all Wednesdays from the 25th, 1st, and 8th. And then, maybe after the 25th, if it looks really like we haven't gotten very far, add some, double up during the week. Would that help?
So, can you list the dates?
Yeah. October 25th.
Is that a Wednesday?
That's a Wednesday.
Sorry.
November 1st, that's Wednesday, and November 8th. Would that be okay?
Nope.
Maybe do the 15th, just in case.
Nope.
Just in case.
November 15th?
Yep.
Now, Lois, how far have you gotten on the budget process?
So, we have, actually, yesterday, we walked through Catherine Horaki and two other Budget Committee members to talk a little bit about the buildings, to talk with, to talk about our needs, to talk about the capital improvement plan. So, in terms of the budget, we at this time have our leadership team looking specifically at their own budgets in terms of those big items, looking at staffing, looking at all of that stuff. So, we at this point, we have, we usually charge the principals in September to start looking at their own budgets, to be thinking about that. And then, what will happen is, we have dates set with Mariah early in October to make sure that we can sit down with them and then start looking at this in a page-by-page situation. Again, I think my concern is going to be around special education, is we see those rising, those costs rising. The other thing that we are concerned about is that we had received a lot of money from ESAR in the past, so we were able to get a lot of grant money. That's no longer there. So, those, as those funding sources dry up, we have to be thinking about, do we have the money we need set aside for, for what the schools need? I know that the principals have been really good, as has all of the department heads in holding the lines to ensure that our budgets pass, to ensure contracts pass. That wasn't, you know, we're lucky, we're still in the middle of those contracts. But at this time, there is some concerns around the rising cost of materials. So, I don't know what that's going to mean. So, just those conversations we've had initially, we were looking, obviously, at those numbers, as we know the numbers and the grade levels can fluctuate. So, we want to just make sure that, you know, we're being mindful of that. But overall, you know, if you look at what the enrollment is, I think, as I said earlier, it's been fairly stable. So, but those are the things that we will be looking at with regard to our budget planning, unless there's something specific you would like me to be focused on.
Anyone have any questions or concerns, comments? I think you're probably right.
You're correct. Eighty, 80% of the budget is there. We know that, in fact, you saw that Health Trust came to our, our opening day, and they gave an overview. We do anticipate that there will be changes in our insurance forthcoming next year. So, you're absolutely right. So, those are the things that we are being mindful of.
So, to confirm, right now, we've scheduled October 25th, November 1st, November 8th, and November 15th. Six to 8? Is that what we did last year?
Yeah. Yeah.
And that room, Mariah?
Same room.
Community room?
Community room?
That would be perfect.
Have you scheduled the leadership sessions yet?
Yeah, we have. Yep, we have. So, those are scheduled the first week in October. We've already scheduled those for the October 10th, I believe, and the 17th.
And, excuse me, Ginny. Perhaps, Mariah, if you could reach out to Wendy?
Yes.
And ask her if those work?
Yep.
Because if they don't, we should all know, and maybe we can adjust it. I will reach out to Andrew. If you don't hear from me, she's good.
Perfect. Nope, I like that. Thank you.
Well, is there anybody, any more questions on the budget? It's our next adventure. All right. SAU 90 is always continually looking how we can improve, what needs, might needs to be improved. And one of the things I think Lois came up with, this Dr. Costa's come up with, is exit interviews for everyone that leaves SAU 90. You want to talk a little bit about that, Lois?
Yep. Yep. So, historically, there's always been those exit interviews for anyone who has retired. And, and really, we didn't focus on some of the other people. But, you know, that's something that we're rethinking, especially in light of, as we think about the retention of staff, and also giving people the opportunity for feedback. So, what I put in your packet on page 33 is the letter that we sent out to anybody who left the district. And then, we attached the exit interview form. If people choose to meet with us, we are happy to do that. I'm happy to have a meeting with them. And if, and if they choose not to, at the very least, we welcome them to fill out this form. And basically, we're asking them to tell us a little bit about why they're leaving, what conditions or reasons prompted them. We ask them to think about wages, benefits, opportunities for advancement, training, working conditions, communication, support of peers, support of admin, overall morale, and job security. And then, we ask to hear more about the place of employment, their salary, their reasons for leaving. And you can see there's a number of closed-ended questions, but also open-ended questions. What do they like best about their job? What do they like least about their job? Opinions about the work environment, coworkers and staff, level of professional support, advice to somebody entering a position here, and suggestions for how our district can improve. I think one of the things that we're committed to is to make the district a better district and to make it a district that people want to come to and that people come here, stay, feel valued. And it's something that I take very seriously. So, I think that if this gives us a little insight for how we can improve, I think we're all open to hearing that. Most of the conversations I have with people, as you know, they've been here a long time, and I hear a lot of, a lot of great things. But there are times, I'm sure, that people leave abruptly, and maybe they have something they want to share with me that I need to be thinking about. So, we welcome that conversation. We welcome that feedback, and we want to hear. I think that one of the things that is not a surprise to some of you is that fewer and fewer people are choosing a career in public education. This is a problem across the nation. It is a problem in our state. We, I continue to talk about our major universities and colleges here in New Hampshire that are dealing with these shrinking enrollments and these shrinking pool of applicants in our state. And so, what I want to be able to do is to capitalize on, on the people that are here. I want to know more. I wanna know more. I wanna know what we can do differently. And if there's something I wanna be thinking about, I wanna do that as well. So hopefully, we can get some information from our employees so that we can continue to be mindful of retaining a high-quality staff, which is, to me, the most important job that we have because that impacts our kids, right? So that's hugely important.
All right, we have...
Just... Sorry. Just a quick question.
Yes.
I think if I was filling this out, I might wanna know who's gonna read it.
It would... So this letter, it comes from me, just so you know, Les.
Oh, okay.
So the page before is my letter to them and just as a thank you for serving our district and that just you can see. So it comes back to me. And by the way, it's only... It is supposed to be only shared with the superintendent. I have, and just so you know, in my office, I have a book of exit interviews. And I... It's there for me. If somebody had a burning desire, I'm sure I could at least give you an overview.
The job of the school board is only to supervise one employee, and that's a superintendent. The superintendent is in charge of all the other employees.
Well, I didn't ask who is in charge. I just asked who's gonna read it.
That's the only person that would read it, would be the person in charge.
If I was a teacher, I would wanna know that.
Right. But just to let them know now, is Dr. Costa will be the only person that will be reading those. So please be honest, you know? A lot of people, when they're doing evaluations or doing surveys like this, they wanna be nice and... But please be honest. Say nice things and say things that can be improved. That's the only way you're going to get change, is to do honest and clear evaluations. So thank you for those people who have done it already, and thank you to the future of people who will do it.
No, we appreciate that.
We have a list of numerous policies that are first reads. So I would ask the board to please read these. I will ask the board members that aren't here, please read them because we'll have to take action on them next meeting.
Just a quick question. The last one, GLCIA about sports-related injuries.
Yep.
Is that a first read too? Doesn't say it.
I believe so. No, it's annual review, Les.
Yeah, you gotta... We gotta do it every year.
We have to do it every year.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, it was last updated in 2022, but we are required by law to do an annual read.
So I'm asking again, is it a first read?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. So I would move all of them for a first read, if that's appropriate.
Second, all those in favor? All first read next. Next month, it will be a second read and put into action. All right, the minutes of Tuesday, August 8th.
There was a typo that was brought to my attention, just so you know.
Okay.
It was on page 92, under Dr. Lois DeSilva-Apton, student service director. It says there are new numbers in the report here. It should say there are no numbers in the report here.
Okay.
That was just... That was it for me.
Any other questions? Okay, motion to approve? Second? All those in favor? All those in favor of the approval? It's... The minutes are approved. Any correspondence that we... Do we have any correspondence?
Nope.
Nope. We, as a board, would like to thank the administration and staff of SAU 90 for their keeping Hampton schools going last week during our heat wave. We appreciate all your efforts, all the things that you did for your students. We appreciate the PTA for their donation of the Kona ice trucks for all our students and staff, and we thank you deeply. We appreciate each one of our staff members, and we also appreciate for all you do for SAU 90 and for all you do for your dedication to your students. Your students thank you, your families thank you, and your administrative staff thank you for keeping SAU 90 going last week. Any other information?
You got ahead of me. I'm sorry. Did we approve the non-public minutes of August 8th?
August 8th? Nope. Okay.
I think we could do that.
Is there a motion to approve the non-public?
I'll move it.
Okay. Becky? All those in favor? Any other business to come before the board?
Well, there's another non-public, but I don't think you can act on that tonight because you wouldn't have a quorum.
We do have a quorum, two out of three. No.
Well, I can't vote on that.
Right. We can.
There you go.
Oh, two out of three. Gotcha. That's all right.
Okay, then we'll save that for non-public. All right. Is there any more comments from the audience? Thank you all for coming, and we appreciate that you came, and we will see you next month.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Riley.
Thank you.
So I guess I would make a motion. Yeah. Yeah. Okay, so I don't know which RSA 91A3 to... Well, I'm not sure mine is, but okay. Mine is about some field trips.
Yeah.
I'm sorry. Yeah, kinda. Oh, whoa, 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 yeah. Okay.
Yes.
So let me do the field trip one while we have...
Do we have... Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Motion, who second?
All those in favor?
Yes, yes, yes. Okay.